Ready?
The director says ready.
Okay. The director. The director, yes, yeah, he runs the show around here.
Action.
I'd like to call this special Shenandoah County School Board Strategic Planning Session to order. Do I have a motion from the superintendent for to convene in closed session, please?
Yes.
Oh, good, I like that one.
Where did you go? Here.
I recommend that the Shenandoah County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss or consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of several employees of the Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to that effect from my colleagues? You have it right down here. Yeah, so you want to do it, please?
Okay. I move that the Shenandoah County School Board convene a closed meeting under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act in order to discuss and consider several personnel matters involving the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, disciplining, or resignation of several employees of the Shenandoah County Public Schools under Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1.
Thank you. Motion made by Mr. Barlow. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Guchal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It carries and hopefully will be out as close to 9:30 as possible.
Okay, do I hear our motion to reconvene in open session, please? Colleagues?
Our move that we reconvene in open session.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Walsh, shall I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gutshaw, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Carries, the Shenandoah County School Board hereby certifies by roll call vote that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements of Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which a certification resolution applies. And second, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening in closed meeting was heard, discussed, or considered by the Shenandoah County School Board. Each member responds ISO certified when called by our distinguishing clerk.
Ms. Walsh?
ISO certified.
Mr. Gutshaw?
ISO certified.
Mr. Barlow?
ISO certified.
Mr. Keller?
ISO certified.
Mr. Helsley?
ISO certified. Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda as presented in two point three?
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Gutshaw to approve the agenda, do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Barlow, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and we will proceed with the strategic planning, and I'd like to welcome all the staff here. And at least it's done in nine thirty, I mean, starting at nine thirty, we will not be in the eleven PM mood as we normally have, so who, Board Chair, Melanie, I reckon, the icebreaker activity?
Yep, so I will go ahead and get started, if we are all well behaved today, we will get out of here by eleven PM.
Thank you. The VFW is open at eleven, oh, eh, oh, eh, I thought you said eh. Melanie?
So this morning, we're going to talk about the school board strategic plan, and we are going to have a lot of activities over the next couple of hours, so we are going to start with our icebreaker activity, and Dr. Heingartner is going to lead us in that.
All right, well, thank you and welcome to everyone, and I'm sure everyone knows everyone's here, we don't really need to do any introductions, but if you don't know, you'll have an opportunity to chat with one another and introduce yourselves in just a few minutes, but make sure you hit the shutter bar over here and take care of any food items, but what I'd like for us to do, and there's a method for this madness, and there's a reason behind what we're doing, and we'll get to that, but the first thing I want to do is kind of pass this around a little bit without any, without any visual cue there to pull one item, one item out of the grab bag here, please. And, and, um, and please refrain from, um...
Eating?
Eating. All right, very good, I like random selection, I think that's true, I like, I like that. I won't be heard, I promise. Okay, so here's what we're going to do, you each have a piece of candy, and around the room, there are some strategic points, we'll start over here in the direction I'm pointing, and so if you have a Mr. Goodbar, you see that yellow piece of paper, that's where you're going to locate your, yourself, okay, if you're a Mr. Goodbar, and you'll see at these locations, there's a notepad and a pen. If you are the chocolate with the silver edges, very good, the chocolate regular Hershey bar, okay, the silver edged Hershey bar is going to be at that white piece of paper, that silver piece of paper right there. If you're Mr. Crackle, you're going to end up with the red piece of paper right there, and what's left? Yep, the gold edged Hershey bars, they got almonds in it? Dark, special dark, okay, that orange is representing, that, that orange piece of paper over here is representing that piece of candy, okay, so do you visually know where to go? Okay, now what you're going to do, here's the task, again, at each place, there's a notepad and a, and an ink pen, all right, the task I'll tell you when you get there, everybody knows where to go, you've got twenty seconds to get to your spot, see you, go, bye. Seventeen. We gotta get up and moving, get our blood flowing here, you know, blood flow in our body, it reaches our brain, it gets our brain going a little bit, make sure that our, we want our best thinking here today, our major best thinking, so we gotta get our blood flowing, all right, here's the activity, appoint somebody, you need to appoint somebody to take notes, which can be very brief, and like one word note, you can then appoint somebody to be a spokesperson, all right, they should be different people. Do that, you've got fifteen seconds to appoint those two people, who's the note taker and who's the reporter, fifteen seconds? You got ten seconds. You got five seconds. Okay, you've got those people appointed, very good. All right, now, here is your task, I'm going to give you by my watch, I'm going to give you about eight minutes, and you are to come up with a list on that piece of paper of commonalities between you and your, and your Crackle team, or your Mr. Goodbar team, your special Hershey team, or your regular Hershey team, okay? See how many commonalities you can come up with between your team in eight minutes, everyone understand the task, or any clarifying questions? Jennifer Proctor taught me well, all right. All right, you've got eight minutes to come up with a list, I don't want to say this is any competition, but I will say that whoever, whoever might come up with the most gets what's in the golden bag, okay? All right, you ready? Go. Clarifying question, body parts and clothing are not permissible, we can't say everybody's, I've got an arm, okay, well, I've got pants on, no, it doesn't, nope. Good job, keep thinking, you got about five minutes. Okay, you have about three minutes, three minutes, remember, you're playing for the golden bag.
Okay.
Little beach?
Could be a certain...
I've already been to Martha Beach, I'm in Ocean City.
We know your budget, Heingartner.
What you got there, honey?
Talked about beach, I was at Martha Beach, I don't know what beach you, and she, I was on, and, you know, a seagull flew by, and she heard it.
She said, yeah?
She commented, was that a seagull? You need to, we're looking for...
Some account said it would have happened on, uh, WSB eight. It ended up real hard.
Okay, folks, you have one minute, one minute, you're on the home stretch, your best thinking. Thirty seconds. Ten seconds. Five seconds. Three, two, one, all right, very good, time, the buzzer is now sounding, very good, folks, um, there was, there seemed to be a lot of writing going on in some groups, and in other, there may not have been as much, so, but, but anyway, all right, here's what we're going to do, all right, this is, and we're leading up here to the, to the purpose, we're going to start with our Crackle team over here, the thing we need first is a number, how many commonalities did your team come up with? Oh my goodness, eighteen, do we have that? All right, how about, uh, Team Special over here, how many? Twenty-one, ooh. All right. Mr. Goodbar, eleven, all right, very good, very good, eleven. And this was our regular chocolate right here. Fifteen, fifteen, okay, now, now let's, let's pause for a second and think, we have eighteen, uh, fifteen, twenty-one, twenty-one, eleven, and fifteen, okay, commonalities, all right, here's what we're going to do, and we're going to read through them, and you're going to read through them relatively quickly, not really fast, but kind of quickly, and Ms. Sager here is going to tally the number of other team members who raised their hand and say, oh yeah, I've, I'm, that's a commonality for me too. So we not only have a team representation on a number, that's why you guys have a chance, okay? You gotta make sure everybody's got a chance to win all the way to the end, all right, here we go, so you see what I'm saying, so if this group here says, we all own Ford automobiles, I don't know, and, and Mike Norman says, I own Ford, or whatever, okay, he raises his hand, okay, so their team would get a point, see how that works? All right, here we go, you guys ready? Read this fast, but not incredibly fast, Ms. Sager has to keep up with people, raise your hand if you have a common when she reads the word, the list, okay, are you ready? Go, Al.
We grew up with pets, what was that, grew up with pets? Oh, hang on.
Okay, yeah, that's all right, that's all right, one from each group.
All right.
At least.
Oh, just one, how long for each group?
No, no, I'm sorry, the number of how many there would be, I'm sorry, so this group had two, three. Two.
Pets.
Pets.
Yes, ooh, so you guys are catching up. Okay. Okay. Okay.
We're all readers. We use social media.
What was the last social media?
We use social media.
We all vote. I'm sorry.
Social media. Raise your hand for you, social media.
Social media.
Social media.
You just commented on my Facebook.
We all vote. We all pay taxes. This is recorded, by the way, isn't it? We're all paying for college, currently, paying for someone's college. We've all visited seven bends. We've seen a bear in the wild. We've been to a zoo. We've visited DC. Visited Skyline Drive. We've completed two years of college. At least. We've graduated high school. We were involved in extracurriculars in high school. We currently serve in leadership roles. We love chocolate. And we all want to win this icebreaker.
Excellent, excellent, very good. All right, here we go. They can't hear you.
All right, we're all in education. We all have kids. Live in Shinko. All worked in Shindoo County Public Schools for at least eight years.
Does PTL count?
Supervise staff. Sorry, Coakley.
How many lived in Shindoo County? Sorry, I missed a couple here.
I'll slow down just. Okay, all supervise other staff. Treat others' kids like our own. Love the beach? Love the mountains? All own a house?
Just one, just one.
Ride a bike?
Bicycle or motorcycle?
Either one. Kinda go together. All of us can drive? Love to eat? Watch sports? Okay, all play basketball? Can ski, water, or snow? Have a garden? You got a tomato plant in the ground, you got it. There you go. All are administrators in Shindoo County Public Schools? Care about student success? Coffee drinkers? Okay, like to sleep in? And last but not least, good with technology? All right, Mr. Heingardner, here you go.
Very good. All right, our friends over here with Mr. or Mrs. Goodbar.
Educators or a teacher? We all have kids? We've all been involved in secondary education? We all have cell phones? We all have a truck? We all did our post-grad in Virginia? We all have over twenty years in education? We all were involved in athletics? We're all vacationing at a beach? We all love to win? And the best is for last, we've all driven a tractor. Driven a tractor.
So we're all investing in kids? We have all traveled outside of the country? Love to read? We're all car owners? Oh, sorry. Sorry, it's hard to tell everybody. Love to eat, is that what you said? No, read.
We're all car owners? We all have siblings? We all love outdoor activities? We are all college grads? Um, we are all sports fans? We all played sports in school? We have all survived COVID? We are all pet lovers? We all love the beach? We have all played a musical instrument? No. Mrs. Shepherd is our favorite superintendent? Brownie points?
I was looking.
We all love to grill? And we are all wine connoisseurs? Sorry, we're at work.
We can have a seat. We can sit back to your original spot, um, if you'd like. Thank you for participating in that. I'm, I am curious if we have someone who would like to share what they think the purpose around this particular activity is. Why would we do this activity? There was hundreds of activities to choose from. You know, a good teacher cre- chooses the activities and the learning episodes that happen in a class for a purpose, not just because it's the thing that I saw on the, what's that thing called where you, no, that other thing, Pinterest. I saw it on Pinterest, for goodness, I gotta do. What's the purpose behind this? We got brains in this room.
We might be all different people, but we have a lot of commonalities.
A- absolutely, absolutely. And this world that we live in is so crazy, and, and we seem to be divided about everything. You know, I can't help but be reminded, every place I go, every conference I go to, every workshop I go to, every time I go on vacation, any conversation I have with people, it ends up turning out to be, "What do you do?" You know, "What do, you know, what are you..." And somehow invariably you end up with people that are in education or are affiliate with education in some way. And this has been from people that we've talked to, from, from Austin to Atlanta, to Arizona, to Colorado, um, and well into California. And guess what? All say the exact same thing. They're dealing with the same problems, they want the same things for their kids. They're, it's, it's amazing. It just blows my mind every time that I'm in a setting like this to think, these people I don't know, I've never met them, they're from Santa Fe, they're from places I can't even pronounce, and they're so much like us right here. And when we start talking about, "Well, we don't have this, and we don't have this, and we don't either, and we, we're trying to get this, and we're trying to get that." It's amazing of how much more common we are than sometimes we, we might think, and, and how much we have in common with one another, so. I thought it was a good thing to keep in mind today as we ponder where we're going and what we're gonna do, and setting the stage for the next school year. And I'm wondering, do we have any figures yet? Yeah, for each group, uh-huh. That's right, plus the total. All right, we're still working on that. Um, so, just real quickly, who can guess? Who, who can guess our prize for the, um, in the, in the golden, in the golden bag? Ah! Jeez. Close. Really, really close. Maybe. Anybody else have a guess? Not the keys to a new vehicle. Tried. Miss Shepherd said, "You've gotta be crazy." All right. Okay, here's what we have. With Team Mr. Goodbar, they ended up with a hundred and fourteen commonalities among our people in this room. The, yep, the next was our, our regular chocolate, folks. A hundred and seventy-four commonalities. Hundred and seventy-four commonalities, and yeah, we spent fifteen minutes on this maybe. Um, our Mr., no, what was, that's the special chocolate. Special chocolate ended up with two hundred and ten commonalities, okay? And our grand winner, the crackle bar team. Who's the representative of the crackle bar team? How many, was it two hundred and twenty-five? Two hundred and twenty-five winners from the crackle, from the, from Team Crackle. Very, very good, and you can disperse the chocolate in this bag to all your team, okay? Thank you all for playing along, and I hope it was a message that resonates a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's give Dave, Dr. Heingardner, a hand for this great activity. It's great to find out we have so many things that are in common and less things that are, that are not. So today, the purpose of today's meeting is to highlight some of the great things we're doing here in Shindoo County, um, with our instructional leadership. And we are planning for our upcoming school year, so we're going, you're going to get to take a deep dive with us into what we're doing for, for, um, instruction for the upcoming school year. Everything that we do for our strategic plan goes back to these five goals. Positive school climate and culture, college and career ready, uh, college, career, and citizen readiness, family engagement and community connections, recruit, recruit, support, and retain enthusiastic professionals, high-quality and adequate facilities and learning environments. So our school year ended May the twenty-fourth. We finished up the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year, and then on June the first, we had a jumpstart to our, our planning for our twenty-two, twenty-three school year. So we didn't, we didn't let much grass grow under our feet. We, um, we started planning for our, our upcoming school year because we know we have some work to do. And we wanna make sure that we do that work in order to make sure our kids have the best chance at academic achievement. So the two things we started with is our comprehensive needs assessment, and then our comprehensive school improvement plan. So what is that? The comprehensive needs assessment actually takes a deep dive into our data. What data? Well, we have all kinds of data, and I'm gonna share a slide with you here in just a minute on all of the data sources we could choose. One of our data sources is our standards of learning, um, assessments. The comprehensive needs assessment takes a look at all of our data and, sorry, Cheryl. The comprehensive needs assessment takes a look at all of our data, and it helps us look at it in a manner which allows us to determine what the challenge, what our challenges are. It allows us to analyze where we are currently and the gap between where we are and where we want to be. It helps us understand our strengths for improvement, our challenges and successes. It helps us prioritize our goals for the future. And it guides the development of benchmarks and provides a framework for improvement. So here are some of the data sources that we can look at. We can look at school enrollment, we can look at attendance, we can look at, um, the number of students we have with disabilities, we can look at our low socioeconomic students, we can look at our student outcomes, how did we do on our state assessments? How did we do on our iReady or, or i, um, Excel? How did we do with our grades? What were our formative measures? What were our processes? How did we schedule students? What collaboration tools did we use? What, what did our school climate survey say? So we can take all of this into consideration as we're looking at how we're going to improve for the future. So before I move to the next slide, um, the next series of slides you're gonna see is preliminary. I want to, um, highlight that word. It's preliminary standards of learning data. So this, um, information may change a couple of percentage points, but it's not gonna change a whole lot before, you know, when it's released in August. But it's preliminary data, and there's two sets of data. There, um, I think the top is without. But it's preliminary data and there's two sets of data. There, I think the top is without growth, maybe it's with growth and then the bottom is, yeah, the, the top slide is with growth and then the bottom graph it will be without growth. And what that means is without growth is that students are performing at grade level. With growth, it means that the student had growth from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year. So, so those are two different ways that we were tested this year. So if you look at the top slide, and I'm just going to pick on Honey Run because they're at the, you know, they're at the left there, in the 2018, 19 school year, they had a 74% pass rate and this is with growth. So the 2021 school year, they were at 61. And then at the end of the year, they were at 92% pass rate. If you look at Honey Run without the growth, then they, their pass rate for this year was 79%. However, look, it was still higher this year than it was in 2018, 19, pre-pandemic. And if you look at most of our, our schools did significantly better this year than they did last year. We did have, we do know that we have some work to do in writing. And it's not that our students can't write. It's that our students have a difficult time applying those writing skills like punctuation and, and commas and things like that. So the next slide is also English Language Arts, but it shows with growth and without growth kind of hand in hand. And if you'll look at Central High School and Stralsburg High School, those schools didn't have the opportunity for growth. It was only our elementary and middle school students had the opportunity to show growth. And the reason Mountain View High School had growth is because they had the eighth graders. So I'm going to give you a second at your table, three to five minutes. As the conversation dwindles, we'll, we'll move on. But what do you notice here in this data? In this data? Some areas for, for, of strength and some areas for improvement. So if you'll take the next two to three minutes at this table and I'll leave this slide up. What do you notice areas for growth and areas of strength? Go.
So that's for, I think the other thing is our focus and resources are going to have to go into the writing class. And I'm going to have to pull high school teachers because I don't have enough staff to help with the number of kids that need remediation. I'll start looking at the number of kids that are coming to us behind and what we have that are already behind and put most of our resources and make me do a great job of getting, help get those kids caught up. But we have to make sure that the achievement is moving along.
And how do you proceed doing that with your staff, getting them caught up?
I think it's going to be the combined growth.
Well, definitely during lunch and probably set up some quality classes. High school, we have a elective, you call it a read-write class. And what I usually do in the past, I've taken my kids.
So they take that fall growth assessment. And that test that we started this year.
Before they would get into ninth grade English, second.
They have a rubric that calculates whether they made it.
So the fall assessment?
Just for the sheer numbers.
Is in the S O L? But they're not.
Carol's point is, is, is a, is a really good one. It does look like.
They're talking about doing fall mid.
If you want to call it, well, we think it would be the middle school system seems to be.
Right now, the fall test tests skills from the previous grade level.
Unless it's third grade. The others. And that's interesting because when you bookend, it's not, you know, elementary to middle, you know, it's up, down, up. And it's not that for sure.
Well, you have to remember, there is a different test at the middle school level. So when you're in grades three through five, there's mostly math and English and Virginia Studies. When you're in your grade six through eight, you also include the writing S O L, which is where Melody said our biggest dip was. So that eighth grade writing S O L is causing some of that dip in that middle school. And then nine through 12, of course, the kids need to pass in order to be able to graduate. So there's a different.
Okay, about 30 seconds and we're going to move on.
That's good.
And in talking with some of the other, this is Language Arts data, but talking with some of the other math people that I work with, middle school math is, middle school is the weakest link seemingly across the board.
Across the board, okay. That's the data. I don't, I see our division, but I don't have the access to other divisions.
In just talking with them, they, that was pretty much what people were saying is middle school is the hardest.
We don't want to depend on.
And at least, you know, English is a spiraling, growing thing. So if they've missed some things in sixth or seventh, it's harder to make up and harder to build in eighth.
So on the screen now, you will see our preliminary math scores. You'll see with growth at the top and then without growth at the bottom again. And you will see quite a difference between the 2020, 2021 year and the 21, 22 school year. Pretty significant. And I'll, I'll come back to this slide. We'll have an opportunity to look at this in a little more depth. But here's, here's the growth factor. And I do want to point out that Honey Run was acknowledged as our, by the comprehensive instructional program that we deal with, with Southwest Virginia cohort. Honey Run was recognized as one of the schools with the most improvement. All right. So again, at your table, talk about areas of strength, you know, just based on this one data source. Understand SOLs is just one data source that we look at. There are tons of other data sources that we use. But what are some strengths here and what are some areas for improvement? So again, three to five minutes as conversation dwindles, we'll come back together.
So a big part of that need you see is going to be algebra.
At the secondary level, what are we testing kids? Algebra? Do we still do geometry?
If, if they do not. Then the next year they take geometry and they'll.
Okay, so you only have 50, you have one.
Any kid that needs a grad requirement, nine through 12, that need that algebra requirement, take the test, even though you have a couple days of remediation, just hoping we can get, and we made a lot of progress there.
She teaches all the students.
Definitely because we didn't have hardly any kids that were in math and grad requirement. What's my worry list is what I call it for my seniors.
She and our other algebra teachers have just, they've used C I P.
Ms. Foltz, will you say that out loud for the whole group? Mr. Gorman, Ms. Foltz is going to say something for the whole group. So about.
Sorry, Mr. Gorman.
One of his teachers, one of her teachers were recognized also by C I P. So.
Yes, one of our algebra teachers, Tammy Cooper, who also, she teaches Algebra I, but she teaches all of our students with disabilities, had a 100% pass rate this year in Algebra I. So that, it's, our students with disabilities is an area that we struggle with at Stralsburg High School. Now, but now just in English because she and Paul Mummel and Sarah Hayes have figured out using C I P, using data to drive their instruction throughout the semester and throughout the year. So.
So the, I mean, these are, you're including your, not only your special ed student, but your mathematically challenged or disenfranchised students. And she got 100%?
100% pass rate.
Her classroom's amazing to watch.
It must be.
And if you look at Stralsburg High School, 100%, and that's with and without growth, passed their standard of learning assessment.
We also had like a 98% pass rate and for our students who had to sit for the Algebra II S O L. So.
But you don't only have to sit for the Algebra II if you failed the Algebra I.
Or right now, so right now we are in a phase where it's phasing out. But we had students at the middle school, say, that took Algebra I as seventh graders, geometry as eighth graders. You're still required to sit for an S O L. So, so we had some ninth graders taking our Algebra II S O L, but that's phasing out.
That was going to be my question is, is whether they were doing that or not.
Well, that's phasing out. And then in addition to that, any student that may transfer into the state of Virginia from a state outside of us that still needs to meet that graduation requirement. So if I'm a 10th grader and I move over the summer to a Virginia high school, I still need a math S O L test in order to meet the graduation requirements. So some of those may be very bright students who are just transferring to us.
But can, can a student that passed the Algebra I S O L test take the Algebra II S O L test at the end of the course?
No.
Cannot take it. Not an option.
They've already met their graduation requirement.
So, so this crackerjack teacher, was she enthusiastic? Was there a new approach? A new, I know that Mississippi had this reading as science thing that zoomed. And is it the same kind of thing with math that there's a kind of a new approach or is it just finding that good enthusiastic teacher and getting into it?
So I, I, first off, it's a phenomenal teacher. She was actually with us for several years as a special education teacher. So she does have a special education background. But the other math teachers don't and like the other Algebra I teachers, one of them did have 100% pass rate, but that she was teaching a course that was just a semester course. So we, we break algebra into Algebra I and Algebra II for most of our students. Our higher students, they just take it in a semester. So she did have special ed background. But the state of Virginia also has Desmos, which is an online kind of calculator that, and, and so she teaches them the problem solving skills to use Desmos as well. But it's really the instructional background and knowing how to teach strategies to our students. And so she and the other teachers work together to plan. And so our other teacher who does it in parts, Mr. Mummel, he, he has learned over time from her, the strategies that she's used. And so like he had, I believe he had like a 92% pass rate. So his pass rate's still very high.
So it is a combination of enthusiasm, dedication and new strategies.
Well, and yes, but it's, you have to teach the students how to use those strategies, obviously, and use the, the tools. So.
One thing I noticed being in her classroom is her relationships with the students. She is totally on board, like, where are your glasses? How were you today? We missed you yesterday because you were out sick. She had a kid on Zoom one time when I was in there. And, you know, she popped over every time after she gave something, you okay? Turned on the speaker. So if the kid had a problem, she, and she was walking around with her students, that kid could say, hey, I need, I got a question, Ms. Cooper. And she'd run back over to her computer and answer that question. So even if you were virtual, you were not left out of that classroom.
And she records her lessons every day and puts them, and put them into Schoology, which next year will be, I, I don't know if she's going to do Schoology or Canvas next year, but even if she had all of her students present, she still recorded her, her lessons and put them. So that was a resource for our students and families.
Well, you, my guess is that there is a story like that at every grade level in, in every subject area of teachers that are having success. What are we doing in terms of collating this set of best practices? Okay. Because obviously she's got something going here. And, and you know, and I would want somebody from Central, Mountain View, you know, to be able to tap into, to that as well.
We actually talked about that earlier this summer, having division level meetings where colleagues from across the division, like Central, all three of our high schools get together and Algebra I teachers are able to talk to each other. So, so we, we talked about that earlier. We don't have any set plans.
That was something the teachers requested this year. So on our March 14th Professional Development Day, I did, I had a two hour session for all of our elementary schools to get together. And then I had a two hour session for all of our high school teachers that are mathematics to get together. And they greatly enjoyed sharing resources, sharing teaching strategies, giving me some feedback on what their needs and wants are for the next upcoming school year as well.
Well, I think too that you hit on something there as well that, that in my experience was probably the greatest common denominator among the best teachers. And that's the ability to have relationships with kids. And I don't know if, in, in the, you know, last, the last five, six, seven years since I've been out of the school, if, if you guys have found a way that you can identify that or if you can teach that or, you know, how you, how you, what your approach is with that. Just teachers that have developed this relationship with kids where the kid would do anything at all to please that teacher and to be successful.
But, but you know what I, what I like about this dual approach is they're not mutually exclusive. In other words, if there are, if we do capture best practices, a new way of doing it, something that juices it up a little bit from what you've done in the past, that'll probably make you a little bit more, as a teacher, a little bit more, you know, on fire. A little bit and, and keep you from doing the cookie cutter everything, which I always thought math teachers would have a big problem with. So I mean, if, if, if you do have a, a new way of approaching it or whatever, that kind of keeps you alive and keeps the students alive too. So I think they, those two things you mentioned feed off each other.
And you're going to hear Mr. Gorman talk about relationships at the end of our presentation today. So it, it definitely, relationships is super important whenever you're talking about student learning. It goes hand in hand. All right. So the next two sets of slides that you're going to see are science and history. So, and know that during the pandemic, our, most of our concentration was on English and math. So here, oh, that's math again. Here's our preliminary science scores. So we know we have a work that needs to be done in, in science. And you'll notice that Honey Run does not have any scores in sciences because they do not have fifth grade there. So we improved at all of our schools over the previous year, but we still have some work to do. To, to get back to where we were or even higher than we were in the 2018, 19 school year.
Ms. Shepherd, obviously the science is a survey of sixth, seventh and eighth, correct? When did they start that?
Science is actually a test at fifth grade. Help me out.
Eighth grade.
Eighth grade and, and of course.
So yeah, you're right, Marty, that it is, if you're taking the eighth grade science S O L tests, it's a survey of sixth, seventh and seventh grade.
But when I taught.
Well, that's a long time ago, Marty.
That's true. But I mean, that's, I don't understand how they can judge. You know, it's three years of SOLs given in the eighth grade and I don't see how teachers can manage it.
So what we put into place is benchmark assessments. And Melissa was talking about C I P earlier. They have benchmark assessments, which allows us to know that kids know what they need to know at the end of sixth grade. Kids need, have what they need to know at the end of seventh grade. And we could disaggregate that information to get down to the actual S O L, the standard of learning that they're not competent on. And we can, we can reteach that, we can spiral, we can.
Why did the state eliminate, have one at sixth, seventh?
I, I think it was money. I'm not sure.
Okay.
Anybody else have any other better answer? It was money.
Well, that and they wanted to reduce testing.
Right.
And, and the desire to reduce the number of tests.
The, the desire to reduce testing and the cost of the test.
Well, I, I think too, I mean, let's be honest. If I'm teaching sixth grade science and I don't have an S O L test tied to it. I mean, I don't want to say that you're not giving your best effort, but I mean, there's, that level of accountability is not the same as it is when you're teaching eighth grade science. So I, I don't know if, you know, while we don't want to have an S O L test tied to sixth and seventh grade science, you know, maybe create our own type of test. And I think we're doing some of that.
Benchmark, yep. That's our benchmark assessment.
Right, in, in which a kid is, is accountable for, for that.
And then history. And you'll notice north. And you'll notice North Fork does not have any history, and again, it's because they do not have eighth grade. So we have some work to do in history as well. Before we move on, I, I want you to understand that you're seeing the top level view. There's so much more information that we can get into as we, as we disaggregate this information. We can go down to the standard and look at the standard to see if it was taught at the rigor in which it was needed to be taught, or if it was taught at all. So this is, and this is just one method, one data point that we use. There are tons of data points that we use in order to make decisions about what we're gonna do instructionally in our school. Mr. Barlow.
So where, where are we in, um, relooking at tying history to SOL again? Is that...
So you're gonna hear more about that in the next hour.
Okay.
Yep. So then, so that's the com- you know, that's just an overview of the Comprehensive Needs Assessment. We take data, we look at it, we see where we're strong, we see where we need improvement, and we, you know, come up with, our, these are the things that we need to address. And then we do the Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. So, and I'm just gonna highlight this because you're gonna hear more about it here shortly. Um, but our overarching goal is we wanna increase the number of students passing the state assessment to meet, um, the state accounting benchmark of seventy-five for English or seventy percent for all other content areas. However, you saw that, um, Stralsburg High School had a ninety-two percent pass rate in math. Do we want her to go down to a seventy percent pass? The answer's no. We want her to improve at ninety-five percent. She just said a hundred, so, you know, so that's, it, it's a great goal. But, you know, if, if we're at ninety-two percent, we wanna, you know, improve that. So we're not, we're not gonna move backwards. Um, and then, so part of the Comprehensive School Pla- Improvement Plan, you have your overarching goal, you have your essential action, and then you have your action steps. So the essential actions this year is planning, delivery, and then monitoring for our core areas. So we're on develop, implement, and monitor process for ensuring lesson planning is aligned to the standards of learning. I think, um, Mr. Barlow, that answers your question, are we teaching our standards? The answer is, this is gonna be part of our Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. And then, so, planning, delivery, monitoring. And then we're also going to do attendance and student behavior. And then the action steps, the school teams are gonna develop. So what's a school team? Each school has a leadership team that is coming together over the summer to help develop their Comprehensive School Improvement Plan. So they'll be meeting a couple of times, at least a couple of times during the summer. But again, you'll hear some more about that as, as we progress.
Melody, is that for every school?
It is every school, yeah. It includes actually Triple Tech and Massanut and Regional Governor School. Yep. And so, um, one of the things that's really important with our strategic plan is that we have great teachers on board, and we have great teachers in the classroom. So Linda is going to give us a hiring update. I think you might use the keyboard. Here, I wanted to share with you a list of our current teaching positions that have not been filled yet. These are just teaching positions. The support staff positions and administrator positions are not included in this count. So right now, we have thirty-eight unfilled teaching positions. You'll notice there, first on the list, we have ten elementary positions open. That used to be the easiest position to fill. We used to have tons of elementary applicants, and we have principals who are going in first thing when they get up to check the applications and see if there's a new applicant. We still have ten vacancies for elementary positions. And you can look through that list there on your own, but I'll also add, we are now at the most challenging time in recruiting season. June fifteenth is the deadline for teachers who are under contract in Virginia to move to other school divisions in Virginia. And so they cannot move without permission to be released from their contract, from their current division. And surrounding divisions and divisions across the state are in the same position we are with the challenging times in filling these teaching positions. So they're reluctant to release positions and teachers also. Um, I made a note there at the bottom, we've had ten resignations, teacher resignations since the last day of school, and five of them are since your last board meeting. And Linda, I believe we had two come in yesterday asking to be released from their contract. Was it yesterday? Yes. Yes. And so certainly, those will be contingent upon us finding a suitable replacement. I'll give you just a minute to look at those. And then here, I wanted to share with you the different advertising and recruiting sites that we use. Primarily, our positions are posted on the SCPS website through our applicant tracking system. We also, during the school year, are sending out updates to our current staff through the Tuesday Times for them to share with their neighbors and family and friends who may be looking for positions. Jessica Sager manages our paid Google Ads for us, so a huge shout out to Jessica. Um, then we advertise through the Northern Virginia Daily, usually one day in print, and then we follow up with the online ads that are attached to that through their job board. We use K-12 Job Spot, which is the VDOE job board. Um, Handshake is the tool that colleges and universities use. So we post through Handshake. And then all of our administrators have relationships with representatives in education departments at the colleges and universities around us. That's all the information I have to share. Do you have any questions about that?
So when we think about instruction from the division level, uh, we think about exactly what Andrew was talking about earlier. We, we talk about the level of accountability of instruction that is given from the division level to also to the school level. And we all know that our principals are instructional leaders in the building. Our job is to help support them, go out and help them any way we can, but also make sure that we have processes in place that when we make a change, we can do it division-wide. So when we look at our data, we're able to see things and be able to make changes across the division. Today, what we're gonna talk about is a little bit about the instructional team, the, sorry, the Continuous School Program. Jennifer's excited. Uh, the Continuous School Improvement Program, uh, the instructional support that we provide to schools to help them. Uh, we don't go in and say, you have to do this right now. We work with principals, say, where are you in this process? We think this is what's gonna help you. Can we help develop a plan with you and work through that with you? And we'll talk about some of those steps that we use in that. And then obviously, that school, um, improvement plan that we have at each school.
Now it's my turn. So we're gonna talk about the Division Leadership Instructional Team, um, and these are all the folks that, um, go out and help support at the school system. I'm not gonna read through all of these people, but you can see who they are. Um, we go out and try to, um, support with, uh, weekly meetings, going through walkthroughs with the principals, all of those types of things. But this is the team that comes out and, and helps, um, all of our principals down in the school, so.
So when we think about Continuous School Improvement, there's some things that we need to keep in mind. It, it's a working document. We never create something and say, yep, this is what it is, and this is what we're doing for the remainder of the school year. That may be where we start, but as we move along, we work with principals. We know that there's other instructional needs inside that that may come up that we help. So that document is always involved, uh, evolving as we move throughout the school year. We never wanna become stagnant. If we become stagnant, we move, uh, we lose a lot of opportunity. It actually is a roadmap for the school to go by, and it helps us to follow that school. Each school is unique in what they have. They have a group of staff, and they have a student body that's unique to that school too. So not all students are the same, not all teaching staff in a building is the same. So it has to be an ongoing, evolving document. We wanna support our administrators. So our big thing going out is, how can we help you? These are our initiatives, what's working, what's not working, what can we do differently to help each school? That may vary from school to school, and that's perfectly fine. But we have to have an overall arching goal, what we're trying to accomplish, and we'll show you that here in a second in our plan. And then this year, we started our quarterly checks. This is really important because when we have goals, we have to have ways to measure them, and we have to look at the data. We have to have artifacts. Are we doing what we're supposed to be doing? Is it working, is it not working? If it's not working, we need to make changes. We don't keep doing the same thing over and over if it's not working. So working with our principals, we meet quarterly with our principals, and we'll do that again this coming year. And then also as a division, we look at our data and the things that we're doing quarterly to make sure that we feel that we're on track, or if we have to make changes.
One of the things we, that Chad didn't mention, it's also an opportunity for us to keep a check on resources that are available in the schools. Um, and that's a lot of times how we find out when we're, we're in need of something additional, or we need some PD on something in that area. Um, but when you think about the instructional support that we're providing, um, one of the things that we, these are some of the things that we make sure that we're addressing, meeting notes, um, talking about the data that's been collected that identifies the need for a change. Um, those are things that we look at, we talk about, um, that get shared. Then we also have our SMART goals. Are they specific, measurable, attainable, relevant? Um, re- rigorous, that's one of the words we've been talking a lot about, is making sure that we're reaching back to that rigor that we had pre-pandemic. Because during the pandemic, we, teachers had to shift the way they were teaching. And so now getting back to that rigor that they had previously. Um, result focus and making sure that everything is timely and trackable. Our timelines, we have to create those, but then we also have to check in and make sure that they're realistic and that we're, they're still attainable, because we all know things come up, and sometimes we have to adjust those timelines, or sometimes we get things there a little quicker, and so we're ready for the next step. So constantly checking our timelines. Um, and our essential actions, they need to be implemented and make sure that we're doing the things that are gonna give us the biggest impact. Um, you know, there are lots of things that we do in a school, uh, but not all of those things can be centered back to what is making students grow. And so making sure we're doing those things that have the biggest impact, and they're impacting our data.
We also look at the visual representation of implementation. What's that mean? That means, can we see what it looks like, or can we talk about what it looks like? One of the hardest things to do is make a change and not know what you're doing, because you have, you've never done this before. It's never happened. So what does it look like? And what doesn't it look like? What are the things that we don't wanna see during this process? Because we wanna make sure we identify that early, because we don't wanna go a couple weeks and, well, we shouldn't have been doing this. If we knew that upfront, let's talk about it, what does it look like? And let's move from that point. How do we monitor? Making sure that that monitoring is there. So we wanna make sure that we have high-level artifacts that leverage what we want to do. Is there fidelity? Or is everyone doing it? Uh, so if it's a breakdown, if one group's doing a little bit of it, another group's doing all of it, something's, well, here and there, that's not a lot of fidelity. So we don't know if the results that we're getting are ac- accurate. So that's gonna take us more into our, uh, plan of where Ms. Shepherd spoke about what we come up with as far as planning, carrying it out. Potential barriers, uh, making sure that we talk about barriers instead of saying, well, we can't do this because, it's more of, because of this, this is how we're going to approach it. So a lot of times, we put up a barrier, we can't do it because of staff. Well, because we don't have a lot of staff, this is what we're gonna need to do. So flipping that backwards to look at it differently. And then obviously, through this whole process, we're gonna reflect, we're gonna reassess, and we're gonna revise that we need to, that's that living part of it. We're constantly revising and getting better at what we're doing.
So as we, uh, Ms. Shepherd talked about earlier, um, we talked about the essential actions, and when you think about, uh, teachers and the art of teaching, we can break it down into really three ca- categories, planning, implementation, and monitoring that data. And so this section here is about the planning section. Um, and so we've really put a lot of focus on collaborative planning for this coming year and getting teachers to really work together. So that kinda goes to the part where you're talking about Stralsburg's algebra teacher and making sure that she's sharing her great ideas with all of the teachers that are teaching algebra. And so, um, that common planning time is huge. But during that time, using data, um, that will be our role, is to help make sure they have the data that they need. Uh, protocols for lesson planning. We've been working with administrators to kinda help fine tune that process so that it doesn't become just a list of activities that we're gonna teach this week. It's really about delving into that data. It's really about looking at, uh, what are best practices? What are common misconceptions that kids make when they are taught this concept? And then meeting with principals to reflect on those common lesson planning times, and how can we help, help support them and making that the best and most efficient time for them. Um, one of the things that we've been working with at the elementary level, because we know elementary teachers never get enough planning, is relooking at those schedules and figuring out a way to give elementary teachers more time to be able to get in there and have that during the school day, uh, so that they can work together. And so we've been working with the elementary principals on that, and, um, hopefully, they'll be getting some, every so many days, they'll be able to get more of a ninety-minute planning block versus that forty-five minutes that they've had in the past, which I know elementary teachers will love. Um, so that's the lesson planning portion.
And then the planning portion I wanted to bring up too is that, um, I used to do this a lot with Jennifer when she was a principal, I would attend plannings with her, so we'll go and attend plannings also. But it's really getting down to what Mr. Barlow was talking about. When we plan, are we really getting into the curriculum framework? Are we really looking at what students have to do? Are we using the language that they're gonna have to know? Do they know the vocabulary?
The rigor.
The rigor of it? Are we presenting it the way that it's gonna be presented when they may be assessed on that? So that's all important in that planning part. The next part that we look at is the delivery. So after we plan, we have to think about how it's actually being done. So at our level, one of the big things that we do is we started thinking about this process this year, going around watching our instruction. So one thing that came up was our instructional schedules that we have. Are we giving history and science enough time? So we started looking at schedules and started seeing what we're seeing in practice, and went back and said, okay, we may need to make some modifications of that. So we came up with, at elementary and middle school, recommended times for core instruction. So every principal got that, now every school's different, they build around it. We may have said ninety minutes, that it may be eighty-five minutes, or it may be ninety-five minutes, but it's how it fits within their schedule. But there should be at least a common across the board. If we said forty-five and we're given twenty, that's a lot of missed time. So that's one thing that we've done so far moving forward. Also, how we use our time and the staff that we have. How do we use our staff during that time? Really taking a critical eye, walking around with principals, watching what's happening in classrooms, walking, if there's a paraprofessional in a room, and a teacher in a room, what's the teacher doing, and what's the paraprofessional doing? If we have two adults in a room and one's standing doing nothing, let's talk about that, let's discuss what that person could be doing with children while they're there. And then professional development. As we go around, we know that we're implementing things, and we know that there's gonna be times that we have to do professional development throughout the school year to support as we see the need. We're also gonna work on doing timelines with our principals that we walk through with principals to look at what we look at from a division standpoint and what they are looking at, so that we can have rich conversations about what are we seeing in practice every day in, in the school. Just like when they go sit down in the planning phase, they sit down with the teachers to plan. They see what hap- they see what's happening, they help walk them through it. Here, it's about a monitoring of it, of going around to see where do we need to help when we're planning. And then sitting down with those conversations, that's probably one of the best things that I love to do. Uh, they pick on me because I always say about the five whys. Why are we doing this? And we get five whys down to get into the, the core of why we're really doing something that is really doing what we want it to do.
And then the other part is monitoring that, uh, the data that our teachers are getting. So none of these three things are easy things when you think and break it down. The amount of time that goes into really planning quality lessons is difficult. The amount of time it goes into delivering those lessons is difficult. And then the part, the amount of time that it takes for teachers to really monitor their data and then figure out what to do with that data. You know, it'd be great if everybody was on grade level, that'd be a lot easier, but we know that's not the case. And so what do we do for kids that aren't on grade level? How do we help intervene? What do, what interventions do we put in place? Um, and then also the kids that are above grade level, what do we do with those students? How do we help enrich what they're learning? And so none of that is an easy process. It takes time and it takes, um, knowledge, and, you know, when we get first-year teachers, we really have to wo- help them walk through that with our coaches and our lead mentors. And you know, when we get first-year teachers, we really have to help them walk through that with our coaches and our lead mentors. And then also helping them understand how to disaggregate that data. What does it mean? And so that's where we come into play and help them understand some of that, put in some places, put in some practices to really look at that data and some of the forms that we use, like through RTI and things like that. And each school's kind of in a different place with that. You know, at the elementary levels, they're in a much different place because of the different levels of support they have. They have reading specialists in the building versus the high school. They don't have as many staff that are able to come in and triage student learning and help with kids that are significantly behind. And then also we've been working on looking at school-level dashboards. And so really taking all of that data that we get and putting it in a one place so that administrators and teachers can quickly look and say, oh, okay, this student is red, 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 and that's phonemic awareness. So we know that's what that student really needs to work on. And so trying to make it as user-friendly for our teachers and, and quick so that they don't have to spend a lot of time trying to figure out where to go. But that whole process on monitoring the data is, is time-consuming and difficult. And that's where teachers really stress out because it's also the part where they're reflecting on how well did I teach something? And how can I help my kids? And you know, they're in this job because they want to, students to succeed. And so that's when, you know, they, they really start to bleed and sweat over the data, so. Anything to add to that part?
So as we move forward, I think we're going to take a break, but we're going to move forward. We're going to give you two examples we're going to do within language arts and math of what we do. But this goes throughout all different subjects. It, it could be even into a CTE course that we're, that we're doing. Spoke to administrator about looking at data at CTA, the competencies that we've been doing. So this goes into all the subjects and we're just going to give you a sample of what that looks like. I think Mr. Barlow spoke about the science of reading. And our dashboard's changed this year and it really reflects a lot of the science of reading and why we changed it because we had a lot of data. Was the data really serving a purpose? So let's put the data that serves a purpose on a dashboard.
So we're going to take a break, how long?
So let's come back at 11:10.
11:10.
Yeah.
Okay. There's coffee and sugar.
Lyndon?
I heard sugar.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
The newspapers? The, have you, have you ever used or thought of using? DNR?
Yes, it is.
All right, I think we're ready to get started again. When we think about English Language Arts, there are two areas that are really high impact that we like to focus on this year, based on the information we're getting from our data and also based on best practices in the field. So those two areas that I'll talk about today are, one, the science of reading, and also writing K-12. First, when we think about the science of reading, it's important to note that science of reading is a term that is used to talk about the collection of all the research that's available on how people learn how to read, and then transferring that research into best practices for schools. When we take a look at our data to determine how our students are doing in the areas that the science of reading defines, we're looking at phonological awareness, which is how students interpret the sounds that they hear in words; phonics, how they attach those sounds to print; high-frequency words, which are words that come up most often in text for students, and sometimes those are words that you can't necessarily sound out very easily, they're irregular; vocabulary, and then comprehending literature or fiction and comprehending informational text or nonfiction. There's a line between, in the middle of the slide there, to show that the top three sections are really focusing on how students read the words that are on the page. The bottom three sections are focusing more on students comprehending and understanding what they're reading. And the reason why that line is there is because when you look at those top three sections that focus on students reading the words on the page, we see that as a relative strength. We're seeing more students in the green or on level in those areas. However, we know that students reading words on the page is foundational to be able to understand what you're reading. And so we know in order to increase the students who are on level in those comprehension areas at the bottom, we need to move all of our students to be on level in those decoding aspects that are in the top section. And so when we think about what the science of reading tells us and how important it is for students to be able to decode, especially at such an early age, we know that this is a focus for our professional development and our materials, as we've seen in our data. And once we've determined what our area of need is, then we focus on what our consistent implementation will be across the division. For several years, we've had a literacy guide that combines our philosophy, the latest research, and our guidance for schools on how to best implement these practices. And so we're taking a look at making revisions to our guide to best include science of reading practices, so that we can make sure that all of our students have a quality experience, regardless of which school they go to, which teacher they have, and what materials are available. Then we're also thankful for the materials that we've purchased to be able to carry out those recommendations. In our 2020 textbook adoption, we were able to adopt textbook materials that align with the science of reading. And when we take a look specifically at what's in there, one of the great features of those materials is that they have text for students to read that specifically align to those decoding features that we saw are in need in our phonics data. And so an example would be if a kindergarten teacher is teaching students how to read words with short "a," so "cat," "bag," "bat." Then students have reading material where they can directly apply those skills into the text, as opposed to, say, going to the library and picking out a book that's interesting, but it might not be specifically related to those phonics features that we've been learning. We use different texts for different purposes, and both texts are important. So our textbook adoption includes texts that connect specifically to those phonics features that we know we want to work on. And while they include texts with those features, we want to make sure that students have ample practice. And what we're currently looking at are supplemental materials to increase the number of those texts that we have available. So these texts are called decodable texts because they're based on the decoding features students have learned. And what's interesting about the texts that we're looking at for supplements is that we can also combine those decodable texts with texts that have content in science and history topics, especially for our students in upper elementary. And so I think that's really unique and special, that publishing companies are noticing that school divisions want to be able to do both at the same time. So that's very exciting for us as well. And when we think about moving from having our consistent guidance to having consistent materials for all students to have a quality experience, then we know we want teachers to be supported to be able to implement these things consistently. Our professional development in these areas is always based on a needs analysis, based on where our data shows our strengths and areas for growth are, as well as the feedback that we're getting from teachers about areas that they would like to grow in, and what we're seeing from our administrators, and what they're noticing are areas for growth with teacher professional development. We're also taking a look at the science of reading recommendations to see areas programmatically that we can grow on and integrate more into our professional development. And then that third bullet talks about how professional development is going to be led by a collaboration between division and school administrators, because we know it's so important for us all to be on the same page with what the research says and what we want our practices to be, and for teachers to hear that message from all of us together so that it can be a joint effort. Our professional development is also periodic throughout the year. We know we can't just get teachers together on one day in August before school starts and think that everything is going to run smoothly. So we've got professional development planned throughout the year, and we're taking advantage of teacher leaders to help lead some of that. We're looking to integrate those best practices into team planning, so that all of these strategic actions that we have in place really connect. It's not that team planning is separate from professional development, which is separate from data analysis. All of these elements have to be intertwined together because we have a common goal. And then lastly, as administrators are providing teachers' feedback, it's based on the professional development that we've provided, which are the elements that are expected in team planning, which is what we should be seeing in the delivery and the monitoring. So everything goes hand in hand. The other high-impact area for us to discuss is writing. We know that based on our Writing 8 SOL scores, that's certainly an area for growth. And much like our conversation about science, the Writing 8 SOL is a reflection technically of grade six through eight, but also it's based on the foundation that we build in elementary school. And so the Writing 8 SOL has two components to it. One is the multiple choice assessment, and the other is a short paper. So I'll start with the short paper. The short paper gives students a prompt, and they have to pretty much write an essay in response to that. But I wanted to ask you about the multiple choice portion. And so take a second and talk with somebody next to you about what you would expect that students experience when they take the multiple choice portion of their Writing 8 SOL. I'll give you just a minute. What would you expect students to see?
There's a lot of... A lot of different vocabulary, I can recall.
That's what this is.
Identify different terms and... The paper was interesting because they did give you a list of prompts, and then you chose the best one. I can't remember how they would read it, but it was definitely a sure big process.
Does that sentence belong? Is there... What other...
Yes, combining sentences.
Yes, combining, or there might be other additional things, and they'll say which one of these best fits in with what you're writing, which would be another supporting detail.
Doing all that extra stuff.
So it's not the multiple choice when you think of, oh, I'm gonna read it.
Find the error. It's not always finding...
Who's the character?
Right. Yes, you have to comprehend the passage that you've read and be able to analyze and apply those writings down.
And they may give you a sentence that you need to put in, or a short paragraph to put in where the commas go, and it, you know, and if you miss one...
Yes.
Like if it's five, it's supposed to go in the passage, and you only put in four.
Or you put in, because there's five blanks, and you put in five, but they only needed three.
Right, right, yeah.
It's all there.
Writing prompt, they can choose the topic of the title.
And I think that broadly sounds better.
Is there more than one?
Yes.
You know, I think in situations like this, when they are designed to trip the kid up, you gotta teach them how to navigate.
We really have to spend a lot of time teaching kids how to use those technologies.
There's at least...
Or even where it's at on the screen.
Yes.
When I taught a long time ago, we would...
Say that again.
Like, we had an advisory group, and we would work on writing prompt. And it's still graded on the five paragraphs: introduction, three supportive descriptive paragraph, and then a conclusion. Is that still the same?
Kinda. So the way that it's assessed is based on...
You can go, you can look at all the prompts right now.
And so in that composition piece, like you're talking about, students need a simple idea, they need to be able to support that idea, and they need to conclude. So the...
Yes, yes. But it's not, it's not the short paper.
But you would want to make sure that you elaborate on your points, so that you're able to make...
Yeah.
And so I'd think that that would be a wise shot.
So the multiple choice, from what I'm hearing, it's not just standalone individual questions, they're interrelated and quite interesting.
Yes.
And it's usually done on two days.
No, that's only...
It's usually taken on two days.
Released like they used to.
Like, on one day, the students will take the multiple choice paper, and then the next day, they'll write their answer.
Create?
So if they're, okay, so if you're doing the multiple choice thing, that's...
That's one of the things that we're working on this year.
The bubble. Are you completely flummoxed?
I don't think writing's cat.
You know what I'm saying? If you go down the wrong trail on one of these, is there a way to recover? You know what I'm saying?
Yes, and so I think that's actually a great segue, Mr. Barlow. I'm hearing some different thoughts about what's included in the multiple choice part of the SOL. I've heard parts about grammar edits, technology-enhanced items, vocabulary, Mr. Gatchal brought up. Anything else that I'm missing that you discussed that you would expect students to see? Mr. Barlow was also talking about how the elements are interrelated, and so you're not just seeing standalone items where students are given a sentence that they have to edit. I've given the board members an example of a section of the Writing 8 SOL. The way that it's designed, for the most part, it's passage-based. So students would receive roughly five passages that are supposed to be examples of student writing. So the idea is that an eighth-grade student is reading the writing of another student. They would read and analyze that passage. The passage that you have is on Broadway Theater. So that would be what students are reading and analyzing. And then they would have questions attached to that passage where they need to revise the student's writing. As you skim through, you'll notice that there are some questions that are purely edits, you know, much like some of the suggestions were. But there are some questions where you can't look at that edit as a standalone sentence. You have to read the passage, understand what it's about, and understand where the writer is trying to go with it in order to make a quality recommendation for how that portion could be edited.
What grade level is this?
Eighth grade. You'll also notice that students need to integrate their background knowledge. There's a question in there about which sentence should be added after sentence seven. So they would need to read the passage, understand what it's about, where the writer is trying to go, and then which of those details below would, could be best added to that paragraph. And in this situation, the passage is on Broadway Theater. And so you can imagine the background knowledge that students need to have on Broadway Theater in order to look at those additional points and determine which one would best elaborate the point they're trying to make. And in this example in particular, I thought it was a little tricky, the correct answer is contrasting off-Broadway Theater with Broadway Theater. And so students having the background knowledge on off-Broadway Theater is an additional factor. And then I also heard conversation about technology-enhanced items, where students have multiple opportunities to make edits to a question. And I've got an example for you, I can show you. This is an example of a technology-enhanced item where there's not just one correct answer. Students need to determine where the commas should be most appropriately placed in this sentence. So they need to determine how many go in there, and then it's all or nothing. They would have to get all of the commas correct in order to get the correct point, the point for that answer as being correct.
Notice they don't tell you how many.
Yes.
So it could be one.
So there'd be a comma after school?
Yes. And when you first read that, "The Spanish Riding School, a specialized training program for those talented, these talented horses, was created in 1572." And so, Mr. Keller's correct, we should have a comma after school. "The Spanish Riding School, a specialized training program..." Ooh, a student might put a comma after "program," but that's not the end of that clause. "It's the Spanish Riding School, a specialized training program for these talented horses," comma, "was created in 1572." And it's also a common mistake for students to want to put a comma in front of 1572, because you often see commas around years and around dates, but it doesn't belong there. So that's really higher-level thinking. And the reason why we wanted to share with you what the assessment looks like is because we know in order to improve, we need to make sure that our instruction is aligned with this type of thinking that students are required to do. So just having students edit single sentences is not going to meet the rigor of this assessment. Just having students write essays is not going to meet the rigor of this assessment because they need to be able to both compose proficiently, but then also be able to analyze and revise proficiently as well. We currently have English curriculum guides that help provide teachers with instructional materials to meet the rigor of the standards, but we want to continue to work to enhance those curriculum guides and make sure that teachers have the tools they need to instruct students to get to this level of thinking. And then when teachers are implementing those materials, regular reflection on formative assessments is going to be really important, because just like we were talking about before with the science SOL, we can't just wait until eighth grade to determine how students are doing with their writing. We want regular reflections throughout all of middle school, throughout all of elementary school, to see how students are progressing, so that we can help fix issues as they occur and not wait until they accumulate. Then that gives school administrators and division administrators the opportunity to reflect on that data together and determine what big trends we're noticing and how we can work together to support our teachers and students. And then lastly, reflect on how that data is being used in planning. If we're noticing weaknesses, what can we be doing during planning to help alleviate those? So we're both realistic and excited. We know that we've got work to do in these areas, but as we talk to teachers about growth in the areas of science of reading and writing, teachers are excited, and that makes me really hopeful. I think they recognize that this is an area for growth, and they like to talk about it because they can see how this is going to make a difference for our students. So we think we're moving in the right direction. I'll pass it over to math.
So math, we have a little bit different of a focus. Our focus is middle school, which I'm sure many of you were able to determine from Melody's data earlier in her presentation. But like Melody said earlier, you can also dive into that data and get further into it and actually make bigger discoveries and other discoveries. So middle school is our area for growth that I'm focusing on next year. And you can see when I broke it down by grade, both pre-COVID and post-COVID, grade six is the first teal bar, grade seven is that middle bar, and grade eight is that final bar in maroon. So you can see all the grades greatly decreased during our COVID year of 2021. But we had a significant rebound for 21, 22. But you'll also notice sixth grade is traditionally and usually higher than all of our other grade levels. Eighth grade tends to be the lowest of our middle school grade levels. And that's because math is a growing thing. Instead of elementary, or elementary, English, where they tend to review skills and come back to them over and over and over again, math, you keep learning something new. It builds on top of everything that came before it. So if we're not doing a great job in sixth grade, eighth grade is going to struggle as well. So sixth grade is kind of our kindergarten of secondary mathematics. And so kids that did well in sixth grade, or were our bubble kids, maybe weren't our bubble kids in seventh grade. And then if they were that bubble kid in seventh grade, maybe now they're our failing kid. So we need to make sure they have that super-strong foundation. So some of the big things that we're working on for middle school math is, number one, the schedule. We are going to a 90-minute block. Some of our math classes were only 60 minutes in the past, which, that's a crunch to get all those standards taught in 60 minutes. So we are getting about 30 extra minutes for most of our classes in middle school math. We are also implementing the math workshop model. We have some training coming next year. And again, like English, it's going to be repetitive training that keeps coming back over and over. It's not a one-and-done situation. So Jennifer Limp is coming in August. She's also going to be doing a virtual hour after school for some teachers midsemester, and then she will be back in January. And math workshop model is, again, very research-based. So a teacher would do a lesson, and then the students would have some rotations, again, building off of that elementary rotation model. And in those rotations, they're going to work small group with a teacher to get more individualized attention. They're going to do something independently, and then they're also going to get some practice on our mathematical online program called iXL. The other big thing we're working on is manipulatives. So in the fall of last year, I was able to work with Jennifer Proctor in ordering a ton of manipulatives for our K-5 classes and working on training with those manipulatives. And so a goal for next year would be to purchase some middle school math manipulatives. So one of the ideas is fraction blocks, and I can pass these right, you're welcome to take them out and touch them. But these let teachers actually give kids something physical to touch and physical to represent, fractions and decimals, which are a concept that are repeated for multiple grades. And then one thing that is new this year that many of our teachers hadn't worked with are exploragons. So that's one thing that we purchased for our elementary school, but there is a middle school version, which is based on circles, which is a huge concept in our middle school grade levels with diameter and chords and radius and circumference. And there are things that the kids can actually touch and move and determine how these things work and how these things correlate together. So that will be a rather large investment. But again, that's a model for teachers to get those hands-on things into kids' hands and help them understand that basic concept before we go to those written equations. And like Linda said earlier in her presentation, qualified teachers are the biggest obstacle that we're running into for math, especially in middle school. A lot of people are very confident in their mathematical abilities up to grade three. Once you start getting into those middle school maths, I'm traumatizing some people, I'm sure, it's hard to find people that want to, number one, be a middle school teacher. They're a very rare breed. But then to be a math middle school teacher is kind of like a unicorn. So they're difficult to find. Last year in middle school, we did have some long-term substitutes. It's a challenge to find, number one, a long-term substitute from middle school, but then one that actually understands and can teach math well. And then we've also had some teachers filling positions, which I applaud them and greatly respect their ability to jump in and fill a hole, but they're teaching out of their certification area. They might be a history teacher, and they're like, "Well, I can't find a position anywhere else, so I'm gonna hop in this math spot." And while that's great and helps our kids, because our numbers stay low, if I'm not learning from a certified teacher, I'm not getting the absolute best I can get, and that can be a struggle. So those are kind of the biggest areas that we're focusing on in math, especially middle school area, to work up our scores in middle school. I don't know who's next.
That's me. That's me. And, you know, and I'll share a real-life example here of Maggie's last point about finding middle school math teachers. I'm currently looking for one. I pulled out a spreadsheet a couple weeks ago of names we had collected from a recent job fair, and there were about 70 names on the spreadsheet. Out of those 70 names, two were endorsed in middle school mathematics. So even when we go hunting and searching, there's just, there's just not a lot of names to choose from.
All right, so developing the school leadership team, all the successes we've talked about today, you know, whether it's the Honey Run and their recognitions from CIP, or Melissa's math teachers, that all rests on the foundation of a solid team. So as Melody mentioned, we've started that work to identify some key stakeholders, and we'll start that summer work. The role within that school leadership team, first, representation and ownership. We want to make sure we have all of our unique skill sets joining that conversation. We want, you know, all of our teams, grade levels, specialists represented, and having a voice in that conversation about our improvement process. And then with ownership, we look at our data, our goals, our objectives, and we have to have a sense of ownership with that. We have to own the good, own the bad, and own everything in between. And when we do that, we're gonna, when we do that and we start to have a solution-based mindset around it, we'll have good outcomes for students. Also with our team, we'll begin to, in our initial summer PD, develop an understanding of that improvement process. We'll get out that comprehensive needs assessment and really have some deep conversation about our priority areas. The role of the team, too, is really developing those leadership structures from within. This can't be all top-down. We have to have some inside-out leadership, especially when we get into the school year and we have some, you know, very structured routines and procedures in place for our common planning time. We're gonna have, need to have some key stakeholders around the building in those teams to help take a lead in those conversations and with that problem solving. And our summer sessions in the beginning of the year here, we will begin to connect our school data with our building-level decision-making to those best-practice instructional strategies and routines. We will, this is where we really look at our data, and then we look at the why. You know, when we get into our curriculum frameworks, why, why are we using these approaches? Or, you know, programmatic decisions like our schedules, why do we need to move into, you know, this model? That's where our team will connect the data and we'll develop that common understanding. And that last point, this plan-do-study-act process and iterative project planning, will make sure that our school leadership team is really strong in this area. That's going to carry right into that collaborative planning. And really, that's about, you know, just developing reflective practitioners in our building. And so we talked about representation. Every school, there might be some variance from school to school, but at a minimum, we, we want to see all our key stakeholders in our core instructional areas, and then our specialists and support staff. I think it's important to note, this is not just about reading and math. It's important that we have our science teachers, our history teachers, our special education teachers, EL, Gate, all of those roles are represented within the team. And we're always going back to those fundamental questions that we have pulled from that comprehensive needs assessment as we, as we develop our improvement strategies. You know, what are we trying to accomplish? What, what changes can result in improvement? And then that reflective piece always coming back in. How are we going to continually evaluate the efficacy of the strategies that we've put in place? And then so for the, looking kind of long-term through the 22, 23 school year, we will review the comprehensive needs assessment, identify the priority areas, and start to connect those things to the CSEP. That's going to start with our summer work. We need to develop that common understanding of, of goals and priorities. We want, you know, our goals to look the same from Ms. Shepherd all the way down to the classroom level in terms of the student outcomes and making sure that all of our students succeed. And then throughout the year, this leadership team will meet monthly, will also meet quarterly when we look at quarterly data. We'll reflect and we'll reassess those needs, priorities, and strategies, and, and there's going to be the frequent collaboration and data analysis that occurs within that team, and then that team also taking a leadership role within our grade-level plannings. And then that team also taking a leadership role within our grade-level plannings.
As many of us talked about throughout the presentation, obviously, data is what's going to drive our decision-making. It's crucial in the process. Making decisions just on the fly is not going to improve our student achievement in any way. So it's going to help the school leadership team that Ryan discussed to determine what are our strengths? What are our challenges? And then it's going, as we dive deeper, we can pinpoint specific areas of improvement. And as many people have said, it's not just a one-shot deal. And I'll give you an example when I get finished of why it's just not that SOL score. So the process we start with, and sort of like right now, Brandon and I are starting with, we are just gathering all the data that we can possibly gather. So then we can take it to our school leadership team when we meet in July. And there are, as Ms. Shepherd said, there's four sources that we consider. We have to consider some of the demographics. We have to consider our school outcome data, our school process data, and even just the perceptions of our students, of our staff, and of the community. So some of the data that we have been looking at for demographics is we look at our subgroup data. That is huge. Our attendance data, which right now is, as we know, is not in great shape. We've been looking at the number of students who are pursuing a standard diploma versus an advanced studies diploma. Number of students who are just taking general courses or trying to achieve higher and take our dual-enrollment courses and our honors courses. And we're also looking at discipline data. And you know, like one of the things we're seeing is we have male students who are in a lot, a lot more identified with higher levels of discipline when you look at our student code of conduct than our female students. So that's something for us to consider. We do look at student outcome data, our SOL test. We've gathered our current year data, but we're also looking at our longitudinal data. We've gathered data for both SOL tests and subgroups for the past 10 years. And in the elementary school, they're looking at, in middle school, PALS, iReady. We use IXL. We're looking at that data. Benchmark assessments through CIP are huge. And starting in January of this past year, we started in our four major areas, science, social studies, math, and English. There was the expectation that they use performance matters assessments with fidelity. So that F-word that sometimes people don't like. But one thing about performance matters assessments is you know that those questions have been vetted because a lot of times when teachers make tests, believe it or not, there is a lot of bias in the tests that they create. So we want to make sure that we're using tests that questions have, you know, they've been vetted. We have a school leadership team in process. We're looking at what our instructional leadership team is going to do this year. They provide a professional development because we believe that teachers teaching teachers is a lot better than us top-down. So we are putting in some processes, more formal processes for response to intervention, which has not been real strong at the high school level, but we have some ideas of what we're going to do there. And then as Jennifer talked about, walk-through observations, that's going to be a huge part of our practice this year. And then diving into the data and getting into pinpointing is really going to help us look at instructional practices within classrooms. And to put more tools in teachers' belts so they can become better at what they do. As Chad said, all teachers, and Jennifer said, all teachers want our kids to do well. But sometimes, you know, there's practices that we use that aren't really giving us the biggest bang for the buck. So that's what we're going to be looking at. And then we have some surveys that we've done in the past. We're creating a student advisory group. We are constantly looking at social media coverage, what's happening in Stralsburg, and seeing what we're not doing well and maybe sometimes what we're doing well. But it is important. It is important to know the perception of our community because, you know, what'd you say?
I just go there for entertainment.
Sometimes it's entertaining, but sometimes if you dig deep, it's like, okay, this may be an issue that we do need to address. So. And finally, we use all of that information to complete what we have. We have a comprehensive needs assessment, as Ms. Shepherd talked about. And for all of those areas, English, math, science, social studies, attendance, and behavior, our school improvement team, our school leadership team is going to be looking at the data to say what extent has our achievement improved or not over this, from one year to the next, past three to five years. Like I said, we even have 10 years. To what extent has student achievement in subgroups improved? What trends can be identified? And those will help us to determine what our needs are, our focus needs, and what are going to be our goals for this year. And the example I was going to give you is when you look at Stralsburg High School and you look at our performance in English with an 88% pass rate, you think, wow, that's pretty great. But then when you start digging in and you look at our students with disabilities, we are not doing well with students with disabilities in English. But then you start looking at, you disaggregate your SOL data from science and social studies, and our students are having a very difficult time with vocabulary, which goes back to that reading. And they're having a very difficult time understanding graphics and subtitles and that kind of thing, which goes back to reading. So, you know, on the surface, we look great, but we are really missing the boat on a lot of skills. So looking at the data is going to drive what we do this year. And it's going to drive, we're going to constantly, as Ryan said, we're going to constantly be going back and looking at it as the year goes on. So.
I think it's Liz.
Liz?
Ready.
I am ready.
They save the best for last, Mike.
When Ms. Shepherd asked if I would talk about common team planning, I kind of nerded out a little bit because this is my favorite thing to talk about. I experienced this as a teacher at WW Robinson, and then I got to support it as an instructional coach. And now as an AP, I get to be a part of the instructional leadership process of common team planning. So thanks for letting me talk. So first and foremost, the structure of collaborative team planning might look a little bit different across elementary schools. So for K through three, our teams are split up in half because we have larger grade levels. We have seven to nine teachers on each grade level. We split them in half to kind of increase communication and collaboration. So they're on smaller teams of three to four teachers, whereas in fourth and fifth grade, where they departmentalize, they plan based on the content area they teach. So our math teachers plan together and our reading teachers plan together, science and social studies, and so forth. Instructional coaches and administrators get to participate in those meetings too. They are, they serve as resources as well as just another sounding board for strong instructional practices. And we ask teachers to use the backwards design planning model, which I'll walk you through now. But kind of the tagline with that is we're starting with the end in mind. So Allison and Chad and Jen and Maggie have all brought up looking at assessments. So what we ask teachers to do before they come to common planning is look at the assessments that they're planning on giving at the end of a unit. Mr. Keller, you had talked about not teaching to the test, and obviously, we're not trying to do that. But we want teachers and students to be aware of what's going to be asked of them and how they need to perform. So they're looking at assessments. The teachers are coming up with maybe common misconceptions that students are bringing to the table before they actually present the content. They're also planning lesson objectives. So after they consult the curriculum framework, which is a document that the VDOE provides that lists standards and essential knowledge for students to know, they're coming up with their lesson plan objectives, so their I-can statements. So students will be able to walk away at the end of the lesson saying, for example, I can identify odd and even numbers, because that's the content that the teacher is teaching. So one of the big pushes that we have in elementary is our students understanding why we're teaching them what we're teaching. And so that, we're making sure that the lesson objectives align with the standard that's being taught. Along with the standard that's being taught, we're tying back to direct instruction. So what are the teachers actually teaching? Does it tie to the standard? And does it tie to the objective? So that it all kind of makes sense for students. And then throughout this whole process, we're reflecting. We're talking about what might work and what might not work. And that collaborative conversation is really flowing so that it will ultimately increase student success. So that's the process that teachers are taking during this collaborative planning time. I also want to highlight some of the benefits of collaborative planning because it can really, really lead to student success. And we've seen that firsthand with some of our data. But specifically, we support new teachers in this process. I went to JMU, and when I came out of JMU, I was able to write a 14-page lesson plan on identifying odd and even numbers. That's not realistic for our teachers. And so this process where they're collaborating with their team, they're learning how to plan, has really just given them shape to their delivery of instruction and ultimately increases student success. It also creates a sense of community. So if a new teacher is really struggling with, I'm not really sure what strategy I should try, they've got three other people they can immediately go to and say, give me some help. It also, like I said, increases student success because teachers are consistently talking about effective strategies. And then last slide. So the instructional supports we have for teachers in the building, obviously, us as administrators, we're the instructional leadership of the building. We go to collaborative team planning. We provide resources and feedback based on those meetings. We're also in classrooms, and that's huge. We want to make sure that we're on the ground level with teachers, understanding what's going on, what barriers students might be running into, so that we can address those head-on. Our instructional coaches.
I thought that was my five-minute buzzer.
I don't think it was a drill. It wasn't a planned drill. Anyway.
...
Whoever pulled the fire alarm so that I would stop talking. So, I'll just wrap up really quickly. So, our instructional coaches are huge support for our teachers. They're in classrooms daily, talking about effective instructional strategies, providing resources, as well as our school leadership team. So, Ryan talked a lot about what the makeup of that looks like. And so, for us, it's a group of teacher leaders in the building who disaggregate data to improve student success. There are also our go-to teachers. They're mentoring new teachers. They're, you know, displaying effective instructional strategies for other teachers to go in and watch. So, a huge, huge support for our teachers in our building. That's for last.
I don't know about that, but I'll bring us home. Okay, I'm going to talk a little bit about building relationships. And to be honest with you, I probably feel like this is one of the most important things that we do. And none of the things that we discussed earlier here today can happen unless you do that. I worked with Tammy Cooper, the math teacher that Melissa talked about, and she has it. I'm not sure you can really teach it, but she was a master at building relationships with kids and getting them work for her. As Dave did his little survey and the activity earlier, I saw a lot of you raised your hand about athletics. And I'm sure all of us have had that coach in their time in athletics that seemed to get a little more out of kids and was successful.
Oh, sorry. And got a little more out of kids than most other people did. And the reason they did was because they built these relationships. We are in the people business, and this is what we do. Building relationships, you know, things in this business, as I don't have to remind you guys, are not always sunshine and rainbows. And when the times get tough, it's these relationships that you build with people that help you get through the tough times. And it's no different with the kids. It's the same thing that we need to do in the building. And the one thing that hinges on building relationships and is the toughest commodity to find that we all struggle is time. It takes time to spend with the kids or adults, to get to know people, and to get through the tough things that when you have tough decisions or you have to have those tough conversations, that time you spent with them with other things helps you get through that. But it is the hardest thing to do because we don't have a lot of it. And most of us in the building level, I can tell you, we get pulled back into our office time and time again, whether it's that angry parent or the phone calls. And we have to work at spending time out with the kids. And I try to spend our lunch period. I said, "Tell Sheri, the main secretary, don't bug me unless it's an emergency. I want to spend lunch with the kids." And that's where you get to know them. And that's where you get to start building up that rapport with kids that is so important. And with that, and the more time you spend, comes trust. And that is paramount. The time you spend with people, you build trust, which equates into you have a good relationship. And then when you do have to have those tough conversations or those tough topics, you have that to build on and draw upon. The other part of the time part is being out, is you know what's going on in your buildings. Because, you know, when you're spending time with people, trust me, they're going to, "You've got a few minutes? I want to talk to you about this." And you start finding out what the pulse of your building is. So, all those are just benefits, you know, of building those relationships. And as I said earlier, it's hard to teach it, but we all know those people, the Tammy Coopers, your former coaches, that definitely knew how to get the most out of people when, you know, kids had played other sports or in other classes just didn't seem to perform the same way. And it hinges on building those relationships, which rolls right into discipline. They're almost one in the same. You know, it's all about that rapport you establish with your kids. You know, the stock that you build up in the bank because you sat down with lunch and ate with them and found out what they did over the weekend or what their interests are, that, you know, when in their kids or adults, you're going to have to deal with them on a tough topic. And you're going to have to have a tough conversation with them. And you're probably going to have to, you know, assign them some punishment or whatever it's going to be. But in doing so, and I call it, you know, you can still do that with respect. Just like, you know, as adults, we can talk with each other with tough topics, even if we disagree, and have that respect and still give each other that dignity at the end of that conversation. Because I think that is the most important thing. Even when you do have to discipline a kid, they know it comes from a good place and that you give them their dignity. Now, that doesn't always happen. I do know that they come in and some people come and scream, and you may have to put your foot down and maybe not be so nice sometimes, too. But you always start right there. Just giving them that respect and that dignity, even when you have to discipline them. And that goes a long way. And at the end of the day, you know, when you get to that point, it's not about the punishment. Punishment's about just changing behavior. You don't want them to not do what they did or do those other things that, you know, may get on your nerves or against the school rules because they're going to get that day of ISS. You want them not to, or you want them to correct that behavior or not do what they did out of respect. At the end of the day, you want them to do the right thing, but you want to make them think, you know, "I promised Ms. Foltz, Mr. Dorman, or whoever that I wouldn't do this again." And because of that respect and that rapport you've dealt with them, that's what's going to curb that behavior and go a lot further than any punishment or anything that you give a kid. So, at the end of the day, that's what you want to do. And it all hinges on relationships you build with people. And the tricky part about that is finding time to spend with all the duties that we have to do to develop those relationships. So, that's all that I have, kind of in a nutshell. Doc here, they're yours.
So, I would first like to thank all of the team members who presented here today. They've done a fantastic job talking about the things that we do during the summer in order to be able to plan for the school year. So, you know, we often hear, "Well, what do you do during the summer anyhow?" You've just seen a little snippet of, you know, actually what occurs during the summer. We're planning for student learning for the upcoming school year. So, if I can give all of my colleagues a round of applause, I would really appreciate it. But the work that we're doing now is integral for our student success. And we will, you know, we will plan now. We will implement in the fall, and we will monitor it constantly. We won't just monitor it in, you know, next summer. That's not going to happen. It's going to be a constant monitoring. And as somebody mentioned earlier, we do have quarterly meetings with our schools to see how it's going. And, you know, each quarter, we're going to re, we're going to look at the school improvement plan, and we're going to see where we're at. And we may have to adjust and revisit, but we're going to look at that. So, is there any questions that you have about the information that you've been receiving today? Or any questions? Yes, Mr. Barlow?
I wanted to say I'm incredibly impressed with the plans, the personnel, your enthusiasm, expertise. I mean, it's really heartwarming and really, really wonderful things. I'm not, I don't usually say those kind of things, so that's unusual for me. But I really, really appreciate it. But I do want to say one thing as a former teacher. And there's a lot of plans and school teams and a lot of top-down stuff. And just like with your own kid or your pet or something, you know, one of the things that Amy Kudera has actually said is, "Teachers matter." And so, keeping that spirit of the teacher alive without overwhelming them with top-down requirements is going to be your challenge. Because, I mean, a teacher just, I mean, a teacher goes into teaching so that they can love that experience in the room and be with the students. And they don't want to be overwhelmed by requirements and bureaucracy. And I know I'm preaching to the choir here. I know that you realize that that's one of the dangers, and we have to find that happy medium, if you will. But the idea is to keep that, to kindle that spirit of adventure and excitement with the teachers that they feel when they're in the classroom with their students. Because that's a magic time. So, that's all.
Yep, there is definitely a balance there. And, you know, I think Liz and maybe Jennifer both talked about finding that common planning time. You know, given our elementary teachers especially, who have very little planning time, some extra planning time in order so that they're able to share successes and talk to their colleagues about what's going on in the classroom or what worked well for them and what didn't work so well. So, it is really important. And we're trying to take a more, instead of being top-down, a more collaborative approach. So, you know, we're working on it. We'll get there, yes.
I think that, that spirit of collaboration is exactly what's coming through here.
Right. And that's why, you know, and that's why we invited members from all of our, many of our schools, is because it's collaborative. It's not coming top-down.
All right, thank you, Dan. My other colleagues have comments? Well, I like, I mean, this is my third, starting my third year, right, Andrew? This is the first time, this is very informative. I mean, you're all doing a great job. You got a big challenge. You only got, what, two months? We'll be seeing students again, so keep up the good work. And with that, we will adjourn Kyle at 12:15. Have a good afternoon. Good job.